Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the B County Commissioners Court. This is our regular term meeting. It's Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, nine a.m., B County Commissioners Courtroom one-ten, one oh five West Corpus Christi, Bevo Texas, seven eight one oh two. That's our call to order. We're going to be led by Pastor McGregor in our opening prayer. Would you please stand and then remain standing for the ladies?
Let us pray. Our gracious and loving Father in heaven, we ask for the blessing of your presence on the readings of this court. Truly, this significant activity touches the lives of our great citizens and their precious family. Thank you for the goodness and grace that have showered upon us as a people. Our heritage is rich because of your bountiful blessings. Therefore, we praise you. We come seeking your forgiveness for violating your holy laws and for failing to love you and to love one another as you've commanded us. Make us a people who willingly seek to please you in all that we do. We thank you for those you've raised up to lead, to guide, and to represent us. You've blessed us with the members of this court. Grant them the strength, the wisdom, and the courage to make right decisions. May each be ready to give an account to you for the decisions made. Guard, guide, and protect our first responders and all those charged with our community's safety and security. As they patrol our streets and respond to incidents and accidents and fires, may each sense a special measure of your presence, your protection, and your abiding grace and peace. You've blessed us with so many who provide great care and protection day by day. Lastly, we pray that you will tenderly care for those citizens who struggle in and suffer in mind and body or in spirit. May you, the great physician, bring them the healing and strength they need. Sav now the hearts of those who mourn. Grant them your abiding presence, your comfort, and your peace. Make us a people that desire to do your will in all that we do. Lord, let B County flourish by the preaching of your word and the praising of your name. May each of us look ahead to that grand and glorious day when you shall return. The dead shall be raised. Loved ones shall be rejoined once again, and all wars shall cease. O God, speed the day of your coming. Indeed, yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our fifth pledge.
On honor and integrity of the flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, the heavens, one state, under God, one individual.
Thank you, brother. Next, number five, we'll have Commissioners Court opening remarks. If you want to start.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone had a great weekend. I'd like to start off with some recognition. First, I'd like to recognize Jennifer Rena for spending a bunch of time with me this past week on understanding what grants are actually in progress and trying to get an update, and also what grants are actually being proposed and being worked on. So, great insight for me, especially when you're coming across the Commissioners Court and the other Commissioners fall into their area of sandbox, is a new term here I'm learning. But that way we have an understanding, so that way we can all agree on the same process. Also, I'd like to recognize Mike Willow for inviting me to a senior official workshop on emergency management. That occurred on Thursday, so thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Some general information, I think everyone hopefully got the message. If not, it's still being submitted. I'm going to have a town hall meeting on March the fifteenth, which is Wednesday. I'm going to have the appraisal district present the appraisal process. It's going to be from six-thirty to eight-thirty at the Skidmore Cafeteria High School. Hopefully, if you are able, please attend. There's going to be a lot of great information coming out. Hopefully, your questions can be asked, you know, why are property taxes so high? What is the process on getting our property assessed? How do they do that? What is the comparables? You know, things are going up, and people are letting me know loud and clear that they're paying a lot for their taxes. Granted, this is only one part of the process, the next process is the actual tax collection, which should be coming up by the later date. I attended a county investment course, which provided me a lot of great insight. Thanks to April for providing some guidance and giving me some insight on what this class was all about. I think it's important for us as Commissioners, since we all have fiduciary responsibilities, that we understand where your hard dollars are being invested at. So, this is just one step to get a better understanding, and so far, April has been doing a great job with that. So, but, you know, training, training is important. It's good to, good to know that. Again, I attended a senior officials workshop on all hazard preparedness. I think that's very important, that we understand that when a major event happens, we all know what to do, who has accountability, who needs to take charge, because I know up here, we're all leaders, and sometimes we may have a tendency to want to step in if there's a gap. So, we need to clearly understand. Ryan, I know you're going to probably be the first point of contact, and but it's good to know when something happens, what do we do? You know, if we have an active shooter, if we have a major chemical spill, those kind of things, we need to have a plan of action in place. So, Tynan, still waiting on some updates from Tech dot. Hopefully, they will get something soon. They have bids out for correcting the drainage, which is used to be the O Co-op, right? What's the name? R and R, commodities? It used to be the O Co-op, and there's some major drainage problems there, but we're working on it, thanks to Tech dot. They've been very, very helpful to me and give me guidance, root for that. Also, waiting on an update to try and get streetlights. You know, I had one Commissioner tell me one time that things move very slow in government, and I'm realizing that compared to the private sector, so, but I'm going to try and see how we can enhance that, that, that progress. Skidmore, thanks to Commissioner Lenny. I too am now starting to pick up trash in the Skidmore area. There was a lot of trash that was either dispersed by people or dogs. So, we picked up a lot of the trash there, but as soon as we pick it up, it's back out again, so, pretty interesting. Robbie, I'll need to get with you later. We had an issue with a dog where basically it I got to get a clearer understanding. I'm not sure if it was an attack or an assault by a dog, a neighborhood dog, on one of our senior citizens there in Skidmore, and she tried to get him away with a broom. Anyhow, I know we have a major issue with dogs. I know we are unincorporated, so there are no guidelines. But I think, you know, hopefully, the people understand that, and they can help manage some of their animals. I think I heard, when a dog, please take responsibilities. I love dogs. I have a dog. You know, he's my, he's my best friend. I take him to Dairy Queen once a week, get him a pup cut, so I have nothing against dogs, but, you know, when it, when it starts attacking people, then it becomes a bigger problem. Quick response on emergencies. We had a truck that knocked down a yield sign. I called up Ray Gonzalez, a road administrator. The next day, he had it fixed, so thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. It's a safety concern, so good to know that you moved quick, quick on those kind of things. So, really, really appreciate it. Also, we're going to, Ray and I are be doing some investigations. We had some equipment that was damaged. So, we need to take a little further, you know, was it truly done? So, we're going to be looking into that, so, so that's coming. That's really about it. Big thing, again, reminder, town hall meeting Wednesday, six-thirty to eight-thirty at the Skidmore High School Cafeteria. Please attend if you can. A lot of great information will be disseminated that night. Thank you.
Commissioner, before you start. I'd like to recognize any visitors in the audience, and they would like to state their name for the record. Just, and this is not public comment, this is just recognized a visitor. So, if anybody would like to stand up and say who you are, welcome.
David Cave from Tyler.
Thank you, Dave.
Andre Schaller.
All right, Mr. Schaller, thank you. Anybody else?
Christopher, I have a close to spend the best conservative.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, those are our visitors. There'll be a chance, if you have an item on the, of the agenda, to come up for public comment, but that was just recognition of visitors. Thank you and welcome. Commissioner Lenny, would you continue?
Yes, I, you guys are lucky. I only got one seat from Commissioner DeWitt to read.
Probably took a little bit of the time.
No problem. Now, he had sent me this to read, this absent. Mineral Post Office update, follow the progress in retaining it. Social Service taking managerial applications. Six applications have gone through review. Many thanks to Congress and Michael Cloud and State Representative James Lovano for their help. Pawnee School Bus Stop is operational in Mineral. He met on site with parents and school bus drivers to discuss the logistics. Recalling, no taxpayer dollars was a good neighbor donation from the Wind and Solar folks from Orsted. They still lacked the sign and the short protective fence, which I did see on Facebook that they did get the one that's up. Met with the Pawnee School Superintendent Chad Kelly. Pawnee School District will hold a bond election in May for twenty-two million dollars to construct a new high school. Working with legislature and railroad commissioner regarding the revamping of the oil field solid waste disposal rules, and working with legislature regarding additional requirements on wind and solar farms to include informative signs for fresh responders when responding to a situation at said location. Last but not least, new operating manager for Orsted Wind Solar Farm north of Mineral, Mr. Joseph Selly. The previous manager, Mr. Francisco Salazar, is moving into a new position with the company. And that is from Commissioner DeWitt's remarks. Moving on. Okay, since the last meeting, we had a, the mayor, Brian Watson and I, we we've come up with this deal called Pints for Patriots. And what it is, is a, is basically a social organization. It does not matter what party you're affiliated with. But what it is, is we get together and discuss everything from local businesses, new businesses coming into town, existing businesses that may be improving in some way, from that to worldly problems and, and, you know. We, we're planning on doing some more of that. We have it at La Lina here in town, and everyone.
I attended the first one, and a lot of great.
Some neighborhood watch signs in English and Spanish that was requested by Mrs. Amy Gaetan. And then we put some crime stoppers up, signs up, illegal dumping signs up around the San Pedro area. And then, when you go further down that road, there's a hard S curve. We put some more signs up down there. In doing that as well, we took, I had Tech dot put some new cemetery signs up, get it down on seven ninety-six, coming from each direction, but they don't actually say San Pedro on them, because in order to do that, that has to be a historical cemetery. Then it has to be in brown instead of green. But since there wasn't existing San Pedro sign up, and that, I mean, it was probably like that, good size. And it did say San Pedro Cemetery with the arrow. We actually took that down. It was pretty nasty, and Robbie did a great job getting it all cleaned up. And thanks to Kenneth Mendoza, he went and put that sign back up, so we actually do have a big sign with the San Pedro with the arrow pointing to which direction it is. So, that was a good thing. I know people were wanting that. I attended a pick a cluster career in college spotlight at A.C. Jones. And it was basically talking to a lot of the high school kids and even some college kids that came through about different careers. It was, it's kind of like, it's a career day, but it's mostly spotlighted on their, on a few different careers. I think there was probably ten, ten to twelve different booths set up that day. And that was good, you'll answer questions and whatnot. And then Wednesday, I attended a, an actual career day at A.C. Jones High School, where it was the high school students alone, and talked to them about Commissioner stuff and had pamphlets and whatnot. Just basically, what, what is a Commissioner, what are their roles, what are qualifications, you know, different things like that, some real informative form. Plus, talked to them about my, my other field is physical therapy and, you know, took different things for them to look at and play with, different tools we use and whatnot. So, that was Wednesday. Then Friday, we got invited to Skidmore Tynan Elementary for those little kids, and that was, that was fun. It, it's amazing, those little kids, they come by and they ask more questions than the high school kids, you know? But they were full of questions and whatnot, and it's the same thing, but, and I want to thank Skidmore for, they, we had it in the gymnasium at the elementary, and they brought in one class at a time, thank God. So, very well organized, and it, it ran really smoothly, so.
Is that the first time they do that?
No, they've.
They do them every year?
Yes. So, let's see, what else? What else, what else, what else? Yesterday, there was a, a couple in my precinct who, their, their house needed painting very badly. And we had talked to them, and they agreed that they would buy the materials, and we went and we painted the entire house for them yesterday. So, that was a, that was a good thing to do. Also, I had a call from Nancy Shugarek about illegal dumping on Shugarek Road. So, Robbie and his son Jacob and I went out there and took care of that. And it really turned out it wasn't actually illegal dumping. It was a single big bag of trash that either fallen off of a trailer or the back of a truck. So, we found out who it was, and it was an elderly lady that lives like three houses down, and Ms. Shugarek said there ain't no way she would dump. So, anyway, and then also, I want to give thanks to Robbie and his son Jacob and Michelle Preston for helping yesterday do the painting of that home. Had a meeting with Mr. Mercer this past week, which we'll discuss that, we'll mention the item when it comes up with the ARP stuff. That's it.
All right, thanks. All right, I had a pretty busy two weeks. One of the first ones I want to catch up is the oldest one, is the Blanconia Fire Department. And I believe I got an email this Friday saying that Ms. Gray had to answer a couple more questions so she could get the first draw to order the material. So, we're waiting and waiting, and it's still going on, so hopefully, she'll answer those questions and get that done. On the jail side, they had to turn off power last week for thirty minutes. All, all turned off, no incidents, and they converted the units up on the roof, and they got all their jobs done. So, over the next two weeks, they'll be getting all those units hooked up and maybe just come to an end, finish. On the GLO update, they are sending out the survey letter to some of the LMI areas, which is Pettis and some of the other, I think Tynan's covered. So, the next step after that will be the in-person visits, and then we'll move forward on, on that, because that date's coming up in May pretty quick on the grants. They were going to, I attended a Texas County and District Retirement System meeting in Austin for two days, and that was just an update on their quarterly meeting, so I went, I went there. I got invited to the Golden Trojan Breakfast last Friday, anybody over sixty years old, I guess, so. And their culinary students provided a good breakfast, and it was, it was pretty, pretty nice, really good attended. There was about fifty or sixty people. There were educators and retired people or graduates from there, so that was real nice. I talked to Mr. Mercer on the IT building at the IT buildout at the tax office, and they'll be bringing final drawings and footprints for that next month on the first meeting here, so they can go out for advertisements and the RFPs. And they had their electrical and structural engineers visit at the building last Friday to get that done. So, that's forthcoming. There'll be more on that. There's no agenda item for that, but that's just an update. And that's my report, and that concludes our Commissioners Court's opening remarks. We'll now go to number six, public comment. And anybody who wishes to come up, please identify yourself, and keep limited down to five minutes, and you can address the court to not engage in the public comment, but you are welcome to come on. Yes, sir.
Commissioners, I thank you for your time. Oh, David Cave.
Okay.
I'd like to, to make, there's a special event that's coming up nationwide next month, and I'd like to make sure everyone's aware of that. It's the National Public Safety Telecommunications or Dispatchers Week from April the ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And I'd like to propose you consider at the eleventh, to do at the eleventh, April the eleventh meeting, the Commissioners Court presents to the B County Sheriff and the nine-one-one Dispatchers Office a proclamation declaring April the ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as the National Public Safety Communications or Dispatchers Appreciation Week in B County.
Okay.
Thank you, Scotty.
Anyone else on public comment? No more public comment. All right, being done, we'll move on to item number seven, which is the, the following items are of administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation of each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or the county judge. Do we have a motion to approve?
A second.
Ms. Cantu, is there anything that needs to be brought up or looked at?
And that's it I have, unless you have any questions.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight, approve the county clerk's request to use the county credit card to reserve rooms for the County and District Association of the Texas Region Eight Spring Conference, March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-three.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next one is number nine, approve bids, award, or request for proposal number twenty-two slash twenty-three dash zero zero seven, Tynan Water and Wastewater Improvements for the Texas Community Development Block Grant, Texas CDBG, contract number Colonia Fund Construction, CFC twenty-one dash zero four seven eight. Do we have anybody that? Jennifer, are you going to?
That's going to be a pass.
We're going to go ahead and move on this one, pass. We're not, we're not prepared, well, say we're not prepared. Things are getting delayed because of the information we have, so.
Okay.
What's, what's the protocol we're going to pass?
It, we're going to pass.
Tabled?
Well, it's not, I guess it could be tabled, but it, it went to the Tynan Water Board for additional information.
So, it's still going to go through first, then you come back to others?
Yes, because of the overage of the bid that came in. They, they were over budget, and so we, we need, there's just a lot of information we're trying to get straight before we.
We're going to have to revisit the bid strategy, basically.
No Title VII funds for that?
No.
Okay. Then we're going to move on number nine, just, we're going to pa, uh.
Move in disregard, open item.
Okay, we'll disregard, no action. All right, number ten, approve contract documents for technical specifications between Matthew Electric and B County for the courthouse generator, Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, project number four-three-three-two dash zero-two-seven-nine. Ms. Rena?
Yes, so this contract has already been signed by our county attorney, Mr. Knight.
Okay.
So, now the next, the next step is to get it signed by the judge, so that way we can complete this process, this contract, and send it out, send it back, because Matthew Electric has already signed their portion.
Yeah, I saw the contract. It took up the whole.
It's very large.
Very big contract.
Yeah, so it has been reviewed now, and it's ready to move on to the next step for judges to consider.
I, I have some comments. I guess just some understanding here from the court. Great contract, reviewed it, got a lot of questions. The, the first one, I guess, who has the overall accountability for the contract? Who's going to manage it? Who's going to ensure that it's being done properly?
This, this contract falls under Commissioner Fadis's, they get through the PLC for this project.
So, then the Commissioner would be ultimately responsible for the contract?
Right, but it's been approved. All of it's gone through Mr. Knight, so.
From a legal standpoint, but I'm guessing I'm trying to find, you know, who's the figurehead that when things go south.
I guess the phone rings, it's going to be my phone.
That's good, because I have projects coming up this fall, too, and it's one of the sandbox. And I'm here with that, so when things come to my sandbox, I'll know, I'll know exactly where to stay. So, some of the courses, I had great, great proposal, you know, you know, who, you know, trying to get, understand who reviewed the bids, who performed any prequalification on vendors, sub vendors, how all that's going to be managed, you know, were there any clarifications on the bids? And granted, I understand.
We have, we have an admin, that's the part, yes, we have Grant Works, that's a part of this grant.
So, the admin takes care of that?
Yes, they do all the, all the.
And we have an engineer.
So, they, they manage the, the project, the management portion of it, the document control, retaining the files, inspections. Okay, recording of the inspection. I noticed there's going to be daily logs that are going to be, who, who has final approval on those, that information? Is that the Commissioner?
No.
Final approval always comes through B County. This is B County's project, but we have a project manager in Grant Works that helps with all of the requirements that we have to.
They keep us in line and keep us.
Within the grant, within the grant.
And then they also provide third-party inspection to ensure that the liverboos are being met?
If that's what's listed in the contract, yes, it would be based off their specifications of the grant.
Whatever's in the scope of, on the, on the contract.
Okay. And then, I guess the, I guess there's going to be some progress payments, right? And then, as you go through progress payments, you need to ensure that they deliver it on their scope of work before they get paid?
Grant Works.
Grant Works does.
Okay, Grant Work, Grant Work is our key guy, but ultimately, when the signature comes to approve those funds, is that the Commissioner?
It comes through my office.
Goes through.
So, the auditor will, will be, so you're going to, you're going to take ultimate, ensure that the work was done and sign off on the contract?
When, when we get that from the engineer and from the, from Grant Works, because they're the ones that give me that guidance.
When all the boxes are checked, and it goes back to April's office, then she does her financial check, and then, then it goes through.
I'm just trying to understand the role as a Commissioner, you know, if I'm ultimately accountable for it, responsible for it, I want to make sure that, you know, what, what the process is for getting that done, so.
Right, Grant, you know, usually whoever, like, if I go to Grant Works, they'll lead us through that, that, that charge.
I guess my, my tendency is to be a little bit more proactive based on previous, as a Commissioner to win in my, my previous life.
This, this is a lot different than the private sector, because we have to follow so many rules.
Totally understand.
And jump so many hoops that, that, that we have to, and sometimes it's like frustrating, it's like, oh, my God, we can't move yet, that's, that's my thinking.
Holding on board, but I'm just trying to understand the mechanics on, on, you know, ultimate accountability. Okay. But whoever put the bid package together was very good.
And approve the contract, so there's got to be action on that.
I'll make a motion.
To approve the contract?
Yes, sorry.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. No other questions?
No.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Number eleven, approve to declare the maintenance department two thousand F, afford F one fifty inventory as non-functional and unsalvageable, then placed on the vehicle auction with the CM auction. Ms. Cantu, is this something that we have to, just, it's already done, that's pretty boilerplate? Need a motion for that? Second motion, in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then number twelve, approve submission of UPS store application for the new B County account. Is that something we don't have yet?
No, we go through FedEx and UPS. Since we have a local store, it's just, it's convenient for us to use.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. No other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number thirteen, approve code enforcement officer's request to use the credit card for the onsite sewer facility designated representative, the OSSF DR Course Training Hotel Stay, April the third through the fifth, twenty twenty-three, and that's Mr. Guerrero.
So, yeah, I'll second with comment. I think it's great that you're taking some additional education in that area. It's important that we sharpen our skills in all these different areas, so, so thanks for taking initiative to do that.
No other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number thirteen carries. Okay, number fourteen, approve transfer of funds from contract labor line item to wait. wages for the Elections Office clerk position. Still moved?
I, uh, well, when you're saying so moved, does that mean you're approving it?
I'm making that motion.
To approve it?
To approve it, yeah.
Okay, I, I guess after reading the justification, I do have some questions, um, based on your justification. So, um, I think it may require further discussion, I don't think we have all the parties here to, to move into it, sorry.
You have to have a second before you discuss.
Yeah.
Okay, oh.
I made a motion, we need a second before we can have discussion.
Okay, I'll second.
Now we can have discussion.
Okay. My apologies.
No problem.
Good morning.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners, uh, Laura Warner, Elections Administrator, when I talked with Michelle Madison, Detective Inspector about possibility of moving, uh, one of her clerks to my office to fill a position that was in need, um, we discussed the salary at twenty-seven thousand three sixty, that was what she told me that she was making, which is exactly what the position was, so at the time I did the move, I didn't submit any other additional paperwork, but I found out afterwards that she had gotten a raise from the, across the board, that the, the court gave all the, the five percent, which actually made her salary twenty-eight thousand seven twenty-eight, so when she got transferred to my office, her salary got cut after a raise she had just gotten that was given by the court, so what I'm requesting is, I have extra funds in my contract labor, is to move those funds into wages to be able to put her back to that five percent raise that the court had given her.
In the middle of the year, I, I, she shouldn't, she didn't notice before she moved over?
No, sir, no, sir.
It was the change of status was just done, um, last month, well, well after the beginning of fiscal year.
But.
I, I.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This should've been discussed beforehand, or she should've known beforehand as well? Is this changing a, a, a already budgeted item in the middle of the year? And I, I'll support it, you need to bring it to the Salary Committee and we'll change it coming up in a couple of months for the, uh.
I, I just think it's very unfair that the, the court gave her a, a raise and then it turned around and be, you know, taken away from her, unknowingly to her, I don't know that she would've been able to afford to make the move had that not been done, and I feel like it was mine and Michelle's, I don't know, like the employee should be punished for it, because it was mine and Michelle's, understanding that it was the right salary.
The difference in the raise?
Five percent, the five percent the court gave.
Which is total dollar amount?
Twenty-eight thousand seven twenty-eight, and she said she's at twenty-seven three sixty.
Twenty-seven three sixty and twenty-eight.
But that's how much the change of status was done for, how was that not discussed?
Because I was told.
When that's what went through court?
Because I was told by Michelle that's what she was making, twenty-seven thousand three sixty.
Well, but, but that's the amount of your position, regardless of what that position was, was being, you know, was making, your position that you were offering was making a set amount.
At least I would've been able to have that conversation with her in advance, and I would've also committed it at the same time for advanced consideration to have it, have that money moved, it's not like I'm asking for extra money, the money is there.
But you are, you did ask for extra money in that line item, um, that you're trying to pull from, you asked the court at the beginning of the, the last fiscal year to fund twenty-five hundred dollars for a contract line item that you hadn't before, and now you're mov- wanting to move money out of there, uh, why, why was that twenty-five hundred asked for if you now are moving it out?
Because at that time I had a part-time person that was working on that, and I don't have that anymore, I have that full-time. I, now that I have the third person full-time, I don't need the contract labor, at that time I didn't have that person. When that budget was submitted.
So I, I have, just from a clarification, I think I'm gonna be appointed to the, uh, Salary Committee, so just trying to understand the process.
Yes.
Laura, so a couple of gaps that I see in here, and I'm trying to get them all, mind around, number one, the raise was given to the person or to the position, because typically there's certain, uh, requirements for that position and maybe warrant that raise, but then.
It was the five percent that the Commissioners, the Floor, the Judiciary.
For that, for that position at the top, at the tax office, not the one for your office.
Right, so I think when individuals are moving, they need to clearly understand, okay, I'm moving, I want growth, I want what, I mean, I'm all for that, but if I'm gonna do a growth going from one position to the other position, but it's a lower salary, I probably may wanna think about that, or if that's something that I wanna do, that's gonna be the, the hit that I'm gonna take, so I'm trying to understand that process, Laura?
Yes.
Doesn't, doesn't add up, and then, I'm, I'm just struggling a bit that, the, as, as a team leader managers, and, and again, I gotta, you know, from our private sector world, you know, before moving an employee over from one position to the other position, typically the manager will talk and you know what those dollars are, or you're discussing with HR, I think that's probably where the, I see a gap, I'm assuming HR gets involved with dollars, right? I would think, or strictly.
There's a salary, there's a description of that position coming in and the salary attached to it.
Okay.
So beforehand, they should know, all right, I'm getting into this clerk spot, this is the amount that's gonna be paid.
And, and we did, uh, we did, those department heads, we did have that conversation, I had that conversation with Michelle, and that's where I got that her salary was the same as my position, but come to find out, it was the five percent raise was not included in there, and I just, I just feel like this is very unfair to a current county employee that was just given a raise, that it'd be taken away from her because of a move, because if my position were, if my position wasn't being filled at that, they would've gotten that five percent too, because there would've been employees at that time.
But it, but that's not, that's not how it works, though, that's not how it works.
Yeah, it's not the person.
You need to bring it up in a couple of months and bring it back to the Salary Committee and we'll adjust it in budget, so I mean, that's my take on this discussion.
Commissioner, do you have feedback?
Well, I'm, I understand both sides, and I put myself in that employee's shoes, you know, um, if I'd just gotten a raise, I definitely wouldn't wanna be moved to a position where I'm getting that raise taken away from me, um, so, that's, that's just my opinion.
And again.
And again, you should've, before you moved to that position, you should've been, your department should've been telling you.
And that's what the change of status said, that, that's, that's what gets me, that's what the change of status said weeks ago, and was already submitted through court for the amount of money that was budgeted for that position, for that position, not the one she's moving from, 'cause it's a different position.
And that was a conversation I did have with the employee, that her salary would remain the same, because that's what I was told her salary was.
I, I guess Laura, from my end, and, and I'm just gonna be clear and transparent, you know, new to the position, trying to understand the mechanics and the accounting, how things work, um, what I'm concerned about is setting precedence from here on out, that if another individual wants to move into another role, assuming that they're gonna be making the same pay, and then all of a sudden wants to get into the role, then, oh, forget about this, I have extra dollars in a budget somewhere else, so I wanna move that to, you know, to sweeten the pot a little bit, so to say, so I'm, I'm, I'm struggling just with the process in that a little bit, not the individual, I don't know the individual, and I, I totally in agreement that if she got a raise, she ought to get it, we're looking at positions, and I'm just concerned about setting precedents as we move future that another department will do the same thing.
Any more discussion?
Uh, one more, it, it, it's also said that you were gonna talk to the judge?
I did.
Okay, and any comment from, I mean, he's not here, so.
I, I did not, I asked, actually talked to the judge after the last Commissioners' meeting, and he was supposed to get back to me, he did not, so I submitted the line item with, to Candy with a note that, uh, she needed to make sure the judge didn't want it to go on today's agenda, because I had not heard back from him.
Okay, so we're missing a gap here to, to find approval, that's from the judge, so I guess, uh, tell me what the protocol, do we, do we?
There's already a motion and you seconded it up for discussion, so it's on the table right now.
Okay. And so if the judge has more insight or more input, they're gonna bring it back up?
No.
No? I don't, I'm assessing for protocol, 'cause the judge is not here, I just don't know what, what this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, uh, Candy, he said put it on the agenda, I was like, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, everyone's looking at me, and I'm not afraid to make decisions from.
I'm not, I mean, there, but there's, no, I'm, I'm.
But, I feel that there's a gap with the judge not being here, my biggest concern is setting precedence for the future.
And that's exactly what I'm thinking, that if we start doing this, and they're not looking at the spot that they're moving into, the descriptions they're moving into, and the, the pay, that we're gonna, just, this thing's gonna go well.
And, and you know, since I am, you know, I'm accountable to the people, I wanna make sure we're doing the right thing, so Laura, it's nothing against the person, nothing against what was done, I'm, I've, I've identified some gaps here, so, uh, until I can get a clearer understanding as far as what the path forward is, what is our process, I'm gonna have to hold off on, on approving this, so.
You're withdrawing your second?
Well, I thought the second was for discussion.
No, do you wanna withdraw and table it for further discussion? Or you want, it's on the table now for a vote? I mean, y'all weren't, I mean.
So was it a vote to approve it?
Yes. Yeah, he, he made the motion.
Well, you made the motion to approve.
You seconded it, nobody could have had a discussion. So now we call for a vote.
Okay, so how do I backtrack now? I thought, I thought the motion.
You can withdraw, you can withdraw your second, and it dies right here.
All right, I'll withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my motion. Okay, so number fourteen doesn't, it doesn't move anywhere, it just, it just.
I made my motion to table it.
Ma'am?
I moved the table to the next meeting.
I'll, I'll second that, 'cause I'd like to get the judges' input, it, it, just, I'm struggling, Laura, with, with the process and the precedent that we're gonna have.
There's a motion in a second to table to the next meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Aye. Motion doesn't carry. Number fifteen, approve memorandum of understanding between B County and Coastal Bend Disaster Recovery Group, Mr. Garza.
It's gonna be Mr. Brent, here from Coastal Bend Disaster Recovery Group, he's got a little presentation to give to y'all, we met with the judge this past week, and we sent it to Mr. Knight to review and he approved it, the court's approval now.
Please identify yourself for the record, please.
How are you guys today?
Just two and two.
I'm all messed up with a time change, I gotta, we have to bear with being in my coffee today.
That's okay, I totally understand.
So, uh, I work for, I, I'm the Executive Director for Coastal Bend Disaster Recovery Group, and we are a nonprofit who covers the eleven counties of the Coastal Bend, and what we do is, in the event of a federally declared disaster where individual assistance has been issued, for example, Hurricane Harvey, the winter freeze, there was a flood in Jim Wells, Nuasis County, um, we, uh, are, we act as what I like to call is like a big top, so the other agencies who are nonprofit or faith-based can come together to help those who are the vulnerable population, either low-income, elderly, disabled, um, and help those people recover from those disasters, and so, um, we started in two thousand fifteen, we were actually grouped, by a group of, um, emergency managers who saw the need for long-term recovery, so we don't do the immediate response, we do the long-term recovery, so what, what I like to say is, you know, if there's a disaster, you know, there's trees falling down, stuff like that, that's the immediate response, there, there might be a leaky roof, so they put a bleatarp on it, we're actually the long-term that, that goes in and then makes those repairs so that they'll last for ten, twenty, thirty years, um, we are, um, with Hurricane Harvey, if you look at the second page, with Hurricane Harvey, we, our case management group was able to secure about fifty point nine million dollars in resources for, um, the people of Coastal Bend, um, a lot of that money, the twenty-five million was, the case manager we got was actually from, uh, helping people get GLO houses, but, um, we actually spent, as an organization, nine point two million in construction, um, we had forty-one million dollars of, uh, construction that was, that we did the construction for, that was actually from other agencies, um, who would not have been able to do the construction, because they just have the dollars, they don't have the people on site to, um, help with, uh, the construction, and then, uh, three point four million dollars, which was volunteer labor, that's the value associated with the Labor Hour, most of that came from the Amish, um, and the Mennonites, um, which came from outside of the, outside of the states, and then we had eight point nine in our unmet needs roundtable, which is, what we do is, we would have, every week, we would have different agencies, different funders come together and talk about cases, but, uh, today the disasters are so large, not one agency can help a person, so it actually takes a co- we'd like to call it the Coalition of the Willing, um, to help with that, so, uh, we actually had a couple, uh, in B County, we had some people that mobile homes were, um, terribly damaged by, by Harvey, and so some people would say, well, I can provide the, the labor for, to build the porches that are necessary, we actually offered that expertise of getting the mobile homes placed and go through all the regulatory, you know, uh, hoops that are required, and then all, and then somebody else would say, well, I can provide some of the funding, and then, um, uh, Golden Crescent Food Bank said, okay, well, we'll give some, uh, food so that they, when they move in, they don't have empty shelves, you know, expenses that have to be first to move in, and then there was another agency that said, okay, we can help with furniture, so that they're not moving, um, moldy mattresses and all that stuff into their brand new house, so that's what we offer is that forum for all these groups to come together, uh, the case managers will present the cases, we don't know, um, any details about the people except for where they live, and the number of peo- uh, their, uh, number of family members, that type of stuff, and so, um, through Harvey, we were actually able to help four hundred and twenty-two families receive brand-new homes, and so any one of those, we actually built ourselves, um, that all meet, um, windstorm cert- certification was actually engineered by, um, a, a local engineer, we replaced seventy-nine manufactured homes, a hundred to forty-five of our clients received, uh, general land office brand-new homes, and then sixty-eight mobile homes were replaced through our roundtable, and forty-three homes were built through our roundtable, and then our case managers found other agencies to replace six other houses, um, and so we have, like, a hundred, we had over a hundred and seventy-nine thousand volunteer hours to get all this done, and so what we're asking the different counties, we're, um, in the process of getting memorandums of understanding with all different counties for a couple reasons, one, so that we're actually part of your, of your emergency management plan when there's an emergency, um, and also so that the FEMA, um, changed their rules so that instead of us going to FEMA to ask for a list, the FEMA list, because what we do is, we take that list, we're calling those people and saying, do you need help, because, big surprise, sometimes they don't get enough money from FEMA to actually help with their recovery, so then we use that list, we call out to them and, and try to get their help, well, now the FEMA changed it so that that list actually goes to the county, so the, so the, the MOU just formalizes the relationship between the, the county and CBD RG, um, and, you guys have any questions for me?
So all this is grant-driven, basically, or?
So all of our funding, all of our funding comes from donations and, and, um, grants from other, uh, nonprofits, so we receive no government funding at all. So that, that, when I say that we spent nine point two million, that was all through, uh, individuals and, and donations.
And the MOU is just to create a, the.
Memory of understanding.
Yes, just between the county and, and, uh, so if there was a disaster in B County, the judge could just, uh, reach out to us, or the Commissioners' Court could just reach out to us and say, hey, can you help us here, or we would say, hey, we wanna help out there, you know, we'd, we'd have to reach out to you, um, it also provides a mechanism for, uh, the, for the county to res- well, not the county, for, for a mechanism to receive funding, you know, when that disaster hits, a lot of people are willing to donate, and so it creates a mechanism for donations through the Coastal Bend Community Foundation, and for them to receive the funding, and then that money would sit, sit there, and then we would talk to you guys about, okay, if you want, how do you want us to manage that money, but it, the, the hard part is when there's a disaster, you know, you guys have bigger fish to fry than worrying about, you know, that type of stuff, so that's, that's how this works, that, we, we did that with Rockport, Rockport received funding, and that actually went into the community foundation, and then what, what happened was, to the unmet needs roundtable, they made the, they said, well, we'll help anybody in the county to rent, so all that fund went to people in the county to rent, and I might add, it was all for production, was not for over. And I might add, it was all for production, was not for overhead, there was no admin.
So I, I think, sounds like it's a great thing you're doing, 'cause I know in this area that a lot of people do not have supplemental insurance to cover those kind of damages. And without a program like this, it'd be devastating, especially for moving.
Oh, yes.
So I, I guess I'd like to make a motion to accept this proposal of the memorandum. And I'll use that.
And is, is this an update, or have we had not had one before?
We, we have one.
We've had one before.
Okay, so.
This is just reviewing it before we start hurricane season and get, trying to get all the stuff.
Okay, thank you. You have a motion?
Alright, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Any more discussion?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries. Thank you, sir, for your presentation.
Oh, thank you very much.
Alright. Uh, number sixteen, twenty twenty-three B County Junior Livestock and Homemaker Show. Update in introduction of Paco Shower as the new B County Ju-, uh, Junior Livestock and Homemaker Show Superintendent. Mr. Shower.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
As you said, I'm just here to inform you all, there has been a change, uh, I have been elected as the new show superintendent for our stock show. Uh, Katie Hickman is still our president, and, uh, here to report that, uh, the whole twenty twenty-three stock show, uh, with the premium sale, the commercial help for sale, the baked goods, the scholarships, it all totaled nine hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Wow.
So I think.
Great job.
And, uh, just here to say that I look forward to furthering our relationship and building it, and helping the youth of B County, and I'm here if y'all need anything, and sure I'll be seeing and talking to y'all soon.
I enjoyed myself. Commissioner Lindy did, did, played well up there, it was, it was fun to be up there with the kids.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Quatron.
Good luck. And, uh, number seventeen, American Rescue Plan Status and Projects, that's you, Lindy?
That is, uh, back to the meeting with Mr. Mercer, uh, we met with that electrical engineer as well, um, out at Coliseum. And the update that I've got so far is, they've got the, uh, floor plans is a hundred percent done on the E O C building, and, um, what we're waiting on now is for Mr. Ziggity to get with the, uh, A E P, right? There's the one coming in? No, the, uh.
Oh, San Trish?
San Trish, yeah, they're coming in off the, off the highway to see, they're gonna try to pull up a, uh, how much, uh, power's been used on a year, and see the peaks and whatnot, 'cause there may be enough, uh, breakers that are currently there, they don't have to add anything else, we can run on those.
Oh, really?
If they're somewhere not being used, yeah, we, we looked at all that, and you got that, that electrical box on the, uh, on the, uh, east side, uh, or north side, rather, um, and, uh, I think if they're not taking into account where the old arena was, the electrical that probably ran that, come off those same boxes more likely. But we're gonna get Schneckel out there to look at all that and try to pin down which ones are used, which ones are not. And then, uh, Mr. Mercer said, I think the same thing he told you guys, uh, he should be ready to, uh, present everything. April first, go out for bids, and then end of May, go ahead and declare the winner.
Advertising, there's, you know, yes.
Thirty days of advertisement, and then we'll go ahead and start. That's why I got so marked with Mr. Mercer in that meeting the other day.
Okay, any other A R P?
We haven't discussed anything at all lately.
Yeah, and that's, this is what we're waiting on, uh, for.
This is what holding up the whole, yes.
This is the.
Okay, yes, alright, alright. So, alright, thank you, sir, thank you for everything. Uh, any other business? We don't have any other items on the agenda, no executive session, so we'll move to item number eighteen, adjournment?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, excuse me, sir, thank you.
Thank you, my phone ran out, I was gonna.